Would that be in the consent agenda? Or we're going to answer both courts?
The consent agenda, that would be in the new steps under consent agenda.
I agree. All right, thank you. I'm going to actually call it 5A, because we have six.
Right.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those against, say no. If there's any other things of motion that you can make? All right, seeing none, we're going to go on to presentations. We have a resolution for the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day announced.
Whereas the city of Madison Heights recognizes the annexation of the Odoa and Ojibwe and Patoa Wamie indigenous nations who have lived upon this land and values the progress our society has accomplished through Native American thought and culture. And whereas the city of Madison Heights recognizes the need to honor the city's Native American residents, Michigan's 12 federally recognized tribes, state historic tribes, and all indigenous people who come from across Western Hemisphere to live and work within Madison Heights. And whereas the city of Madison Heights understands that in order to help close the equity gap, government entities, organizations, and other public institutions must change their policies and practices to better reflect the experiences of Native American peoples and uplift our country's indigenous roots, history, and contributions. And whereas the idea of Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations, sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas in 1990, representatives from 120 indigenous nations at the first Continental Conference, 500 years of the Indian Resistance unanimously passed a resolution to transform Columbus Day into an opportunity to educate the rest of the country about the pre-existing indigenous cultures that have survived and offered an often violent colonization process and continue to exist and thrive in present-day America. Whereas in late September, the Oakley County Board of Commissioners resolved to make today, October the 10th, Indigenous Peoples' Day, and many Michigan cities have already declared the second Monday in October Indigenous Peoples' Day, including Detroit, Ann Arbor, Traverse City, Alpena, East Lansing, Ypsilanti, and Madison Heights. Now therefore, we have resolved that the city of Madison Heights shall continue to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day, replacing Columbus Day on the second Monday of October. And it is further resolved that the city of Madison Heights encourages all public offices and businesses in the Madison Heights to observe the second Monday as Indigenous Peoples' Day rather than Columbus Day. And city council urges us all schools, school districts, children's educational programs in Madison Heights to join in this celebration of Indigenous Peoples' Day with appropriate social, cultural, and educational activities, recognizing the historical and continuing contributions that Native American people have made to our society.
Thank you. Next up, we have public hearings. We've got from the CED Director, the rezoning request for PRC M22-303, ordinance 2187, for the property of 29022 Stevens Highway, it's the removal from primary caregiver marijuana grow overlay district. This is the second reading. So you have a public hearing. I'm going to open it to the public. Is anyone here who wants to talk specifically about this? We will open the public comment right in the House. But right now, anyone who wants to talk specifically about this? Who's yours? See, no one has a public comment. And I'm going to ask, what is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2187 on second and final reading.
Is there support? None, yes. Off the board. The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those against, say no. Motion carries, settled, zero. Next up, we have meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for the public to speak. I ask that you keep it to three minutes, that you address your comments to me, give your name, any identifying address or business. And that meeting is open to the public. If you could speak at the podium.
And Mayor, Council, Presidents, I just wanted to say hello. I'm going to introduce myself. My name is Robert Goble. I am your candidate for State Representative here on District Day. I'm running on Republican Party ticket. And I know I sent most of you some information and letters. I just wanted to make a public appearance and introduce myself to everybody and the Presidents here. And I want to thank you for the consideration you give me for down the road. We hope to be working with you in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
I just wanted to thank certain members of the Council, Sean Fleming for the gift donated for the off-trail sign-on option, and Mayor, monetary donations made. Melissa, your wreath glows beautiful, and I didn't really get a chance to bid on it, but we know who won it. It's beautiful. And Mark Bliss, thank you for your contribution of the photography hour, and the frame looks nice. And Toya, even though you won the wreath, you still did a nice Motown tour gift. But I just want people to know that our Council is involved with our groups, and it's really good to see. And I wanted that wreath.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak today?
I was not here for certainly the last council meeting that I was to start when I watched the video. Quorum is important to our mayor chairing city council meetings. Question was asked by Councilwoman Aaron to move the date four weeks in a council meeting to prepare and recognize the importance of the date for our Jewish friends. If that is something that could not have been done at this time, then perhaps a certain councilman could lead the effort to change it next time. The optics of what you did by not showing up for a council meeting after the mayor kindly but firmly asked you to be here was not a team-player mentality. Covering for your teammates is essential to winning, and that includes our city business. You could have backed her up and changed your mind and corrected your decision at the moment she asked you, as it was only closing comments. And no one knew until September 26th at 9:45 PM Sunday night, after I believe Rosh Hashanah started. So our mayor, our city attorney, Councilman Fleming were to wait on pens and needles to know your decision. You kept them waiting. Running the risk of not meeting a quorum is a serious mission for our mayor and our staff and our attorney. If a special meeting had to be created because quorum was not met, then you just led the effort to waste tax dollars. Most importantly, this is a very serious holy day for Jewish people. It is their holy day with their God. You decided to take a day off instead seems like a mockery and complete disregard to the mayor's peace of mind, knowing her team backs her and keeps the city running at its best. I'm very grateful to Councilman Mark Bliss and others who voted no to not excusing Councilman Wright, as he did not think about the consequences of his grandstanding and activism. Not understanding the excusal process for our city is part of the problem.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? All right, seeing no one, I am going to close public comments. Next up, we have the consent agenda. There are three items on this. There's a proclamation declaring fire prevention week for October 9th through 50. There's the minutes of the regular council meeting of September 26th, and there's the newly added item 5A of the contract for the police command, the tentative agreement. What is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor, I move that council adopts the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
Yeah. A simple, I apologize.
You're fine, okay. All right. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor approving the three items on the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Those against, say no. Motion carries, thank you. Next up, we have reports. First one is the Human Resources Director, resolution to opt out of PA 152.
Public Act 152 as amended limits the amount that public employers can pay towards employee medical benefit plans. Beginning January 1st, 2023, the city council is required to make an election for this choice of compliance for the subsequent calendar year. Given that all the city's collective bargaining agreements have been approved by city council provide for a 10% employee premium sharing, council is requested to opt out of Public Act 152 as allowable under the state statute for the calendar year, and this does require supermajority.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor?
Yes.
A move that we opt out of PA 152.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I just want to remind council that in order for this to pass, we do need to have a supermajority of five. Having said that, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those against, say no. Motion carries, seven zero. Next up, from the police chief, animal control and shelter operations with Oakland County.
As part of the 2021 strategic plan, city council adopted a goal to enhance animal control and shelter operations, which include looking at shared animal control services. Following this council direction, staff regularly evaluates opportunities and has recently reviewed the pros and cons partnering with Oakland County Animal Control for some of our animal control services while retaining our in-house animal control officer full-time. These services will be provided by Oakland County at no additional cost to the city and would actually result in significant savings to the city because the multiple animal services we currently use would then come with no fee. Under the terms of this agreement, Oakland County would provide one full-time animal control officer to the city between the hours of 8:00 and 4:30 Monday through Friday. In addition, they will be responsible for the cost associated with the dogs that are transferred to Oakland County cat abuse and or reporting complaints that currently come with the charge. The city's current animal control officer will also be retained to handle barking dogs, wildlife, and roadkill. The majority of these services are already paid by the residents to Oakland County through their county taxes, and residents would be required to then get a dog license through Oakland County instead of Madison Heights. The city of Madison Heights Clerk's Office would facilitate these services to our residents through June, helping with the transition to online services. Further, staff will continue to be available to assist residents that may not be able to access online services. Staff will be working with Oakland County to assist low-income residents who may have difficulty complying with the Oakland County fee structure. Of course, staff and I recommend that city council approve the coordination with Oakland County Animal Control effective November the 1st. Staff will follow up with a one-year assessment of this program. And Patrick Fanning of Oakland County is present. If you have any questions, as well as the police chief.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor, I move that council proceeds of Oakland County Animal Control and Shelter for the city of Madison Heights.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Excuse me, I want to, can I ask a question first before we?
Well, you can do that during discussion.
Discussion, okay.
Do you want to support this?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion has been made and seconded, and now I'm going to open up for discussion. Do you have a question?
Yeah. Okay, so I have a question about the receiving of your, for the dogs tags or anything else like that. Do you have to actually go to the county building and get them, or will they be mailed to you in the future? Like, you pay for them, and then will you get them in the mail?
Chief?
Well, for now, at least through June, they would be available at City Hall. City Hall will be selling those animal licenses. After June, I would have to rely on Pat, Mr. Fanning, to say whether or not they would be mailed. I'm not sure how that works. I would assume, but.
Good evening, Your Honor. Thank you for having me here. All of the municipalities that we provide services for sell Oakland County dog licenses. Usually, it's at the city clerk's office, but some municipalities sell through the police department. Some of them stop selling their licenses when they become delinquent on June 1st. Others continue to sell them. There are also a select number of veterinarians throughout Oakland County that sell their licenses, and they are also available online. Folks who do the online purchase get the license mailed to them. So short answer is no, you don't necessarily have to go all the way up to Pontiac to get the license.
All right, thank you. Is there any other question?
Your Honor? Yes, Your Honor, my only challenge with this, and it was addressed briefly in the staff report, is the increase in cost in the dog licenses. I think it's a 300% increase in cost that then passes on to our residents, and so in general, this is a really positive thing. We're effectively doubling our animal control by doing this, but that singular piece is a challenge for me. So I'd like to make a substitute motion to adopt this as printed with the addition that any budget savings that we're realizing or projecting through this would go into a voucher program fund similar to what we do with the water park, so residents can have supplemented costs with the same budget savings we're realizing from this program.
All right, thank you. So you are, you're doing a substitute with the savings. All right, is there anyone who would like to support this motion, substitute?
I do.
Okay. So we now have basically the same motion that was presented to us with a slight substitution for reimbursement up to certain time once these funds are done. Is there any?
Your Honor, just to clarify with staff, I believe the budget savings, there's a $965 savings of us when we eliminate the software maintaining these licenses, and then there's, I think, a $1,500 from what we're currently doing with the pet licenses versus what we were doing with paying Oakland County housing animals. Would that be correct? Is that approximately 2,500 for the record?
Yep.
Okay.
That's correct.
Yeah, and just as clarity in the motion, that 2,500 would then be available until it's gone to reduce the cost down to the price that it was previously to purchase a dog license, which I believe is $7? Is that correct?
I can't really know.
It varies depending on if it's spayed or neutered or interlaid or.
Okay. Just making sure for the record for everybody to be aware, because as a substitute motion, it's a little odd, but I suspect we would have seen this later on. You know, that was mentioned in the staff report, but with passing this with it included, I think it gives our residents a little bit of peace of mind that in June, they won't have to pay, you know, 300% more for a dog license in the city by making this change, at least until such time that the budget savings are gone. So first come, first served.
Mr. Sherman, did you have something?
No, I was just going to say, Your Honor, and then further discussion of the substitute motion first before.
Yes, we are discussing the substitute motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I just want to note that the 300% more is true, but it's a scary number when you say 300% more. So a one-year license for a spayed or neutered dog would have been $7 for Madison Heights, and for the Oakland County license, it would have been 15. Not a huge gap to span, so I just want to make that clear. It's not like.
So it'll be just, you know?
It would be $15 rather, until we, unless we need the.
Your Honor, just as a point of information, I see 25 on the Oakland County site, 25.
For a spayed or neutered dog, it would have been 15, 25 for a male or female. So if $10 for a male or female in Madison Heights, 25 for a male or female in Oakland County. So it depends on whether or not there's spayed or neutered, but it's not, it's not like you're paying $300. You're paying, you know, maybe $10 more.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Is there any other discussion on this substitute motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I just want to say, that's a great idea, Mr. Bliss. Thank you. And then also, if you have multiple dogs, right, or cats, you got a whole house full of, or a whole thing, not a house full. Within reason. Within reason. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on the substitute? All right, so we are going to vote on the substitute motion, which is to take the approximately $2,465 and put it into a fund to help cover the difference of price, which would be anywhere from the $8 or from the $7 to the $15, or $15 from the $10 to the $25 for anyone who is looking to get, to renew their license in June until this fund evaporates. Yes?
The substitute motion also includes approval of the coordination agreement with the Oakland County Animal Control effective November 1st, with a follow-up one-year assessment of the program in addition to what you just said.
Yes, thank you. Is there any more discussions or questions on this? All right, all in favor. Sorry, yes.
Sorry. I believe that, can you explain what happens to the animals that are picked up by our city, and are they still kept at our animal shelter, or are they transported to Oakland County? You know about that?
So it would depend. If it's a dog that's picked up here, you know, the first option would be we try to get hold of the owner if we can, if we know who the owner is. We scan the microchip, if they're microchipped, and try to return it to the owner from here on Oakland Shelter. If that does not work, then they would be transferred to Oakland County at the end of business day. And Oakland County would then do what they do with adoptions and all the other things to, and to try to reunite the pet with its owner. As far as cats go, cats will still be here all the time. Oakland County does not deal with the cats the same way that we do, so we would still have the cats at our shelter, and we'd still have our part-time shelter assistant working at the shelter on a daily basis.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion on the substitute questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those against, say no. Substitute motion carries, seven zero. Thank you. All right, next up, we have the awards purchases. First, we have from the DPS Director, the Civic Center Playscape grant purchase.
The fiscal 2023 budget includes funding for the replacement of the H play structure Civic Center Park. This structure was installed in 2001, and it's reached the end of its useful life. The DPS was planning to move this structure next month due to its downgraded condition and lack of availability of parts. Again this year, Adam Azorek and Sean Valentine applied for the 2022 Game Time Matching Grant through Sinclair Recreation for the Civic Center Park Playscape. It is our pleasure to report that we were awarded this grant, and this will provide a total of $70,793 for the Civic Center Park Playscape, allowing us to install an exciting custom ramped structure that meets ADA and UA standards for children of all abilities. The proposal for this game time structure through Sinclair Recreation is based on cooperative pricing through Omega Partners Purchasing Consortium. Staff therefore recommends that council consider two motions: to accept the 2022 Game Time Matching Funds Grant in the amount of $70,792.68, and to award the purchase of the Civic Center Park Playscape to Sinclair Recreation of Holland, Michigan, in the amount of $174,789.92. Funds are budgeted and available for this purchase.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor?
I move that council accepts the 2022 Game Time Matching Funds Grant in the amount of $70,792.68.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just an incredible, good job and well done to our staff who was able to get us $70,000 that we didn't have towards this project, so well done.
All right, thank you. If there's no more discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those against, say no. Motion carries, seven zero. And then for the second part, can I get a motion, please, to award the purchase of Sinclair Recreation?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that council awards the purchase of the Civic Center Park Playscape to Sinclair Recreation of Holland, Michigan, in the total amount of $174,789.92.
Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion regarding the award purchase? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those against, say no. Motion carries, seven zero. Next up, we have two ordinances. First, from the CED Director, the zoning text amendment ZTA 22-02 for ordinance 2188, the Caregiver Marijuana Grow Overlay District Amendment. This is the first reading.
Ordinance 2188 is a zoning text amendment to limit primary care marijuana grow operations to properties that are zoned M1 or M2 and located at a parcel identified within the Caregiver Marijuana Grow Overlay District. The existing Caregiver Overlay District allows for the establishment of individual registered marijuana caregivers on parcels that are identified with the associated overlay district map. While the boundaries of the Caregiver Overlay District were intended to mirror that of the allowed parcel map, the overlay district map is technically a standalone map with separate zoning regulations. Therefore, to ensure that the marijuana primary caregivers only operate on properties with industrial zoning designations and to provide consistency between all three marijuana ordinances, the staff recommends that these be changed to M1 and M2. The proposed text amendment states that regular primary caregivers shall be located within the M1 or M2 industrial district and shall be located at a parcel identified within the Caregiver Marijuana Grow Overlay District. At the September 20th, 2022 meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this proposed text amendment as written. Therefore, staff recommends that city council adopt ordinance 2188 upon the first reading and schedule the second reading for October the 24th.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2188 on first reading and schedule the second reading for October 24th.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
All support.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those against, say no. Motion carries, seven zero. And our second ordinance, also the first reading for the DPS Director regarding ordinance 2189 for the stormwater ordinance.
The city of Madison Heights is required to implement a post-construction stormwater management program that meets the municipal's separate storm sewer system, MS4, permit requirements as provided by the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, or EAGLE. EAGLE requires that the city of Madison Heights adopts an ordinance or other suitable regulatory mechanisms, or develop design standards to control stormwater following construction activities and ensure long-term maintenance of stormwater controls. Therefore, staff and I recommend that city council approve ordinance 2189 on first reading and schedule the second reading for October the 24th.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor?
Yes?
I have to make a motion that we approve ordinance 2189 on first reading and schedule the second reading for October 24th, 2022.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes?
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those against, say no. Motion carries, seven zero. All right, that concludes our regular business. We do have a closed session this evening, but before I ask council to vote to go into closed session, I am going to welcome closing comments, starting with Councilwoman Aaron.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to first say happy Indigenous Peoples' Day, and can you believe 12 Mile is open? It felt so good today to actually leave my house and travel down 12 Mile. It was a little confusing trying to figure out how to feel south, but I am so happy 12 Mile is open. And yeah, that's all I had. I'm just happy.
Yes, Your Honor, I am also happy. We had trail tunes over the weekend, and I know most of council was able to make it out, and it was, it was just a super fun time. This was the first year that every one of the musicians was a returning musician. So it's kind of cool, like from our perspective, as, you know, as a planning committee, that we now have enough bands and musicians that want to keep coming back and play. You know, our little pop-up festival that started in the middle of the pandemic when everybody is shutting everything down, and, you know, well, one of the musicians said... everybody is shutting everything down, and, you know, well, one of the musicians said, she's like, Madison Heights will always have a special place in my heart, because at a time when I couldn't play, at a time when there was, you know, and this is a musician who plays all across the state, had a festival in Detroit the same day as our Trail Tunes, and made it a point to come, because she said, "We took her out of what was a really dark time and gave her a chance to perform." And that's, that's the thing about the festival. It's never, I mean, I say this today, you know, reserve the right to be wrong, but I don't think it's ever going to be in arts beats and needs, but it's a really great, accessible event where it brings music directly to the people. There are no stages, there's no costs, and no barriers, and, you know, there's also no taxpayer funding, even to pay to have DPS there. All of that's done with volunteers, and as was mentioned in the, the open to the public, we held a fundraiser before it, and we've gotten a lot of donations. I just want to read really quickly, if everybody will bear with me, I want to read the, the donor list, just so we can give them a round of applause. Novak and Frost, Galen Kia, Liberty Madison Heights, Puff Madison Heights, Artist Supap, Mia's Tasty Grill, Lena Evans, Feldman Chevrolet, Sherman and Sherman, Correct Car Care, Cadillac Straits Brewing Company, Amory's Market, Madison Beverage, Interstate Auto Care, The Coach Correll, Ben and Paula Ray, Berkshire Hathaway Home Services, Key Realty, the Covert Family, the Bassler Family, Century 21 Campbell Realty, City Manager Marsh, Mayor Graffstein, Councilwoman Bliss, Councilwoman Fleming, and Councilwoman Erin. And so that, if that gives you any idea of the amount of effort that goes into it to have that long of a sponsor list, and our list of volunteers is equally as long, and so it's an incredible feat to put that on. I hope everybody marks it on their calendars for, for next year. We're going to be announcing the date in the next two weeks for next year. Really exciting, and I hope everybody can keep, A, coming out and having fun, and B, supporting us in our effort. The Arts Board is now five years old, and, you know, we did the moment of silence at the beginning to Bill Dixon, and for those of you who don't know him, giant pillar of the community, longtime Lanford School Board member, and big proponent of the arts. And so, you know, he and I talked as we were forming the Arts Board five years ago, and he never got to see any of this come to fruition, and so it's a really cool thing to be able to give that update of our third annual Trail Tunes Festival in Civic Center Park, here on the five-year anniversary of his death. I think he'd be super proud of where we are, and we can only keep going up from here. So, thank you, everybody. Appreciate everybody who attended, and see you next year.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to start off first by thanking our fire department and the folks, the communities involved in Oakway. Last week, I got to participate in the Fire Ops 101 training, and it was outstanding. A lot of the folks up here had an opportunity to do it, and it really gives you a firsthand look at what our first responders go through, the training they go through, the continued education they have to go through to deal with everything, from trench digging, to stabilizing buildings, to putting out fires, to like managing what to me feels like a superhero costume with the oxygen masks, and the, they call it the ticker, and like all types of things, and so I just want to give kudos to them, the men and women in that group, because of all the experience and things they have, the thing that I appreciated most is something I hope that we can do here more, is just have phenomenal teamwork and camaraderie. There was a lot of teamwork, there were a lot of people who were looking out for each other. It took me five minutes to put my suit on, it took them like one minute, and this is something they do on a daily basis, so. Thank you to the men and women of the Madison Heights Fire Department for taking some care of me and for the Oakway collaboration. That's a phenomenal program, and we have the resources to help keep our city safe, and so firemen are, and the first responders, police are people that you really don't think about what they have to go through on a day on their basis, so I was very happy to do that. With that, it's Fire Prevention Week, so everybody check your smoke detectors, check your carbon monoxide detectors, make sure that like that's up to date. I remember growing up with someone who's lost their family in a fire, and it could have been prevented if they had a smoke detector, so that's just a small thing. In the past, I've also participated, last year, if you haven't seen me, wearing a lot of pink in October, it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I've participated, real men wear pink, so breast cancer is something that will, if it hasn't impacted all of us, so please make sure that you guys just give. Men, don't just wear pink, donate, it's a great cause. And I wanted to congratulate the new elected board of the Active Adult Advisory, the new Active Adult Advisory Board. At our last meeting, they elected a new president and a new board, so I just wanted to send them kudos on their new venture. The Active Adult Center is alive and well. I'm there with Cory all of, at the meetings, learning about what they have going on, and how passionate they are about this community and what's going on. So I'm a young 42, but I'm not, I'm a dad, I got three kids, so that's my future home, because you can be there when you're 50, so. If you haven't, check it out, but if not, kudos to our seniors. Finally, actually, two more things. First, I want to wish my daughter a happy birthday. My wife and I met in Australia when we were studying abroad, and we named our oldest child Sydney, because we met in Sydney, the city of Sydney, Australia, so I want to wish her a happy birthday, but the final thing I wanted to address was, as you guys know, I was not here last week, and my absence was unexcused, and I found that a little disheartening, but at the same time, that is what it is. I don't think anyone should ever have to miss a meeting for religious reasons, period. Doesn't matter if it's my religion or yours. It's important that we acknowledge people entirely, and so I think we need to address our charter, but we more so need to be more empathetic. Our charter says we only have to meet twice a month. It doesn't say the day or time. So I want to encourage us in the future to take a look at our, our timing and make sure that we try and avoid religious holidays, so we can include all of our residents regardless of if it's for us or for them, and, you know, we just kind of be considerate from that perspective, so. With that, I'll just say, be kind, remember, I got a lot of things on my list here. Last one, it's World Mental Health Day, so check in on your neighbors, check in on your friends, and, you know, to go back to my point about being disheartened, about not being excused, start with the why, and ask people why they're doing it, instead of just seeing what they do, figure out why they're doing it, and then we can get a lot further. So I'll have.
Mr. Sherman?
Your Honor, the only thing I would add tonight is that Tim Burns from my office participated on Friday with the Madison Heights Fire Department in Oakway, and he sent us pictures of himself in the gear. I think the gear weighed more than he did, but we all got a kick out of it, it was great that he participated, and he had the same comments that Councilor Wright had related to the event, so that was really great. That's it, Your Honor.
Just two things. First of all, I want to say thanks to the fire department, for anybody who's in touch with what's going on, you know how hard it is to recruit police department in this day and age. So I had the crazy idea that we start a job shadowing program with high school students to let them know that this is a career field that's available to them, and really what they would have to do to pursue that. So today, we hosted our first job shadowing program at the fire department, and the police department will be hosting in a couple of months, so it was a great turnout for Madison Schools, I appreciate their partnership, and thanks to the fire department for ushering them through that. So hopefully, we'll get one or two interested people. And other than that, the city has been working with the Arts Board to kick off the first art in Civic Center Plaza, so for anybody who's actually visited City Hall lately, you know that we're under a massive renovation project there, we soon will be following up with the laboratory, and so we're hoping to have your art featured on our walls. So first of all, we don't have to buy art, and second of all, we can feature residents' art. So not just residents, it's open to residents, students, people who, you know, live wherever and work in Madison Heights, people that used to go to school in Madison Heights, so pretty much anybody with some kind of connection back to Madison Heights. You could submit your art by emailing my office, it has to be a JPEG or a PDF, and the information will be on our website, hopefully this week, if not early next week, and then in November, they're doing November, so December, the Arts Board and myself will be putting together a subcommittee, I think, to actually pick which seven or eight pieces are going to go up. So a lot of it's going to depend on space and size, so now if you have a humongous piece, you might not have room for it, but I encourage anybody who paints or does any type of art, really, to submit, because the idea really is just to feature our residents. You don't have to be a professional, and who knows, somebody might actually want to buy it. So that's that.
All right, thank you. Anything from the clerk's offices?
Yes, just wanted to remind everybody, the absentee ballots are available for the November 8th election. They are available online, we can get them in person, or we can mail you an application if you'd like a ballot for the election. Also, the secret office is going to be having a pop-up elections office on Tuesday, October 25th, from 4:30 to 7:00, for those that may not be able to get to City Hall during the day, so please feel free to come by to handle anything related to the election, come register to vote, or get your absentee ballot.
Thank you.
All right, so I want to say first that my family was really thrilled to do a couple of new things this week. One was driving 12 Mile from my house to my mother's house, and it was glorious. And the second was to play at the new play structure at Rosie's Park. It's finally in place, great job to the DPS for getting that in place. I know that there were structural issues that we had to deal with over the winter to get it there, and, you know, the summer, but I'm just grateful that it's there. The kids are having a great time on it, it's beautiful, it is exciting, and for many years to come, I'm looking forward to it being accessible to all. I don't know when the pathway gets poured, but hopefully soon, because it's going to be, it's going to be wonderful. And I want to say congratulations to everybody who put on Trail Tunes. I was so sad that I had to miss it this year, but I heard some great things, that was wonderful, so. I also want to encourage everyone to make sure that they turn in their votes, turn in your absentee ballot. I already, I get mine, I fill it out, I put the very same day, like it's very exciting. So not everybody's as crazy as I am about voting, but make sure that you do it. And then finally, I want to say, Anish Nabe Gitzikam, that means Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day in Anish Nabe Moan. Celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day is something that's really near and dear to me personally. I've always known that I was native, my grandfather died before I was born, today would have been his 96th birthday, and he was a child of two Indian boarding school children. I've told this story before, but I feel like it's important for me to reiterate it, because, you know, there's only like six people in the room right now, so, but, you know, I think, I feel like I should tell this story every, every year. But my, my grandfather was the child of two Indian boarding school children, he grew up in eastern Oklahoma, his mother was a Jibway from White Earth Reservation in Minnesota, his father was a citizen, citizen of Cherokee Nation from Oklahoma. But since boarding schools did their job, which was separating Native children from their cultures, destroying their communities, stealing Native lands, and removing Native languages and traditions, I did not grow up with my Native traditions and practices of my own people. Over the years, my mother has helped our family to reconnect with the teachings of our ancestors in small ways, and I've learned more of the stories of my ancestors and the significance of the land as part of our culture. I note all this to show just how important it is to recognize that the Indigenous People of Michigan, this place, Shigami, the Anish Nabe people are still here, are still persevering, still thriving, and the story of this land does not begin when European settlers arrived, but goes back tens of thousands of years, to the Native people who've lived here, developing distinct and rich cultures, and have survived genocide since colonization. I challenge everyone to dig a little deeper, to recognize that this land has a history that is far more vast and wonderful than what many of us were taught in our schools, and I encourage everyone to work, because it takes work, to learn more, and appreciate more, and honor, and celebrate more today and every day. Mi gwich.
I have a few items. First of all, I was not here at the last meeting because of my Jewish faith, and so I do like the idea of doing, looking at the meetings in the future, of having the city manager send us a list of all the meetings in the future, so that we can look at these meetings and go ahead and see if they have any conflicts with the religious holidays that we cannot be part of. I know that Counselor Wright had made a mention of the, of the charter, and I think that's a great idea. I think we should do something about the charter. I think that, right now, the charter is very restrictive about how we have to have so many meetings per month, and I think that if we have a charter revision committee put together that they could definitely look at it and evaluate whether or not that's a valuable option for us to be able to make just maybe, maybe one meeting during the month, sometimes, depending on how much we have to do here at the city council. Secondly, the police, the fire department, I'm sorry, is selling the shirts for November Men's Cancer Month, which is in November, and they're selling the T-shirts right now, it's going till Friday, they've extended it, and for all those who've already bought one, we thank you very much. Thirdly, I've talked to a lot of citizens in our community, and they, they've been asking about the sensory equipment in our parks, that's something that I'd like to see also happen, so I'm asking for our city manager to provide a report for the cost of adding the sensory equipment, and also to add possibly the, the equipment into the next budget for 2023 or 2024, if possible. And then finally, I've asked our city manager, explore, us, the City of Madison Heights, to explore joining the Oakland County Convasive Spongy Moth Suppression Program, which is, there is a, it used to be the Gypsy Moth, but it's now the, called the Spongy Moth, I don't know how God would be that way, but the Spongy Moth has caterpillars that actually eat and defoliate all of our trees, which would take away from our tree canopy, and they're very invasive, and the county wants to try to look to suppress that, so I want to see if we're interested.
Do that at the fire station?
I thought Jeffrey would be up there volunteering.
Glad you didn't say Larry.
I was, but you're here.
Jeffrey's daughter's expecting a baby any day, so he's, he's, he's grandpa in waiting again.
I just want to mention that my middle son is getting married this, this weekend. Can you buy it next time? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone who spoke today. First off, I want to say congratulations and good work for the $70,000 grant, that's awesome. You know, a few years ago, City Manager Marsh just really started looking for these grants, and I was looking for grants, and I think staff caught the bug, and they're all looking for grants now, so that's great, that's wonderful. So thank you so much for, for getting that $70,000 grant, $70,000 and change. This is Fire Prevention Week, and at the end of the week, we are going to be having an open house. It's Saturday, I believe it is from 10:00 to 2:00, so I invite everybody to come out and to see what's going on. It's going to be here, we are doing renovations at our south end rotation, so for now, everyone is here, but I invite everyone to come out, it's really cool, the kids get to use the fire hose. Last year, when I came by, there was a little guy, and he was all in, in his firefighter suit, and he had a hose, and I got a really cool picture of the rainbow he made, so I invite everyone to come, bring your kids, they're really going to enjoy it. I love this idea of the art in the lobby. Years ago, the DDA did a fire hydrant painting contest with the high school students, and I was asked to be a judge, and so I came to City Hall, and I was in that front lobby for maybe two hours, just surrounded by pictures of fire hydrants, but there was some really cool art, and everybody who came in was like, "What are you doing?" And I was talking about it, and I said to this, I don't remember if it was you, or if it was me, I had to remind you, but I said to someone, I said, "This is really cool, we should do something like this in this lobby." So I love that that's actually happening now, that we're going to have that when, next year, when we actually open up our renovated City Hall. For reference, for the two council people who were talking about charter and what we can do, or what we can do within our charter for the different religious holidays, Yom Kippur, which is the highest holiday of the Jewish calendar, which was last year, it ends the 10 days that start with Rosh Hashanah, that is going to be ending on Monday, September 25th next year, which is the second Monday of the month, so if we are doing pre-planning, perhaps this would be a good time to, or next meeting would be a good time to suggest that we move that meeting to the Tuesday, just as we do in May for Memorial Day. When that Monday falls on a council, we just move it to Tuesday. So that is a thought there. I was not here at the last meeting, so I've got a few things that I want to mention. One was last- was last weekend, I was up here at Civic Center Park for the Morning Cranks. They are a bike riding group. They have their first cyclops event in the city, and it was a huge success. So, thank you to DPS, to Mr. Almas and his crew. I showed up, and they told me that they had over 200 participants and that it was the largest event in Michigan that they had seen in the last few years. They just couldn't say enough about the staff and the amenities. And I just want to pass along their thanks and to let the public know that they plan on making this an annual event. It's going to be the first Saturday of every October. So, it's really cool. It was like an obstacle course that you do on your bike. It looked to me like there were youth that were in the 10 to 12-year-old range, and then there were older people in their 60s. So, and then everybody in between, and people of all abilities. I did not do that. I did bike here, but I didn't actually ride it. Yes, Mr. Almas?
Yeah, Your Honor. They've requested September 30, Saturday, September 30 already for next year. That's tentative, so we have to just make sure it doesn't conflict with anything else.
Sure. Yeah, okay. Well, close enough to the first Saturday. But it was just, it was, it was great. And it was just, it was really, it was a nice community feel. I mean, I bike everywhere, but I treat my bike like a car. I don't really, or a washing machine. I don't know very much about anything other than I get on and I bike. But this was a group of people who knew, and they could appreciate the different bikes that were there, and they were encouraging each other. It was great to be around so many people who were just encouraging other people to go through it. And then the next day, I was here for Trail Tunes. And so, once again, another free family fun event. And both of those are funded solely by sponsors and the people who are doing the work of the volunteers. So, both groups did need to hire DPS to do a few things just for the setup, but they paid for all of that. So, it's great. So, if anybody has any other ideas on programs that they would like to bring here, if there's something that you know of that takes place somewhere else, maybe on the other side of the state, and they're interested in setting it up here, let us know. Reach out to myself, City Manager Marsh, DPS Director Almas. You know, if we can get more events like that here, then that would be great. Also want to make a couple of recognitions. Today is World Mental Health Day. Just want to remind everybody that you can't tell just by looking at someone what's going on inside their head. Everyone's got their own battles, whether they're, they have a physical illness that you don't see, or they have something going on, a mental illness going on. And you don't know what people are living with in their homes. Mental illness still has a stigma. I know this as a child of bipolar parents. It wasn't something that we talked about. And it was very tough. So, just keep that in mind. And a lot of times, the best thing you can do is just to be there and to listen. October is also Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I think that we're all aware that domestic violence does happen. Really can't go a day without reading the paper and seeing a story about it. So, people think on the outside, this is a really great guy, and they don't know what goes on at the home, and they don't feel they can leave because society is going to tell them you're making a big deal about it. It's not that bad. Suck it up. Everyone has a bad day. So, just keep that in mind. As parents, as a society, we need to teach our daughters when to say no and how to recognize when they're with somebody who's being manipulative or abusive. And as parents and society, we need to teach our sons to respect when somebody says no. And I know that it's both genders, but the bulk of the situations are men beating on women. And then finally, as you know, I'm from Toronto, and pre-COVID, I would go back every few months. But in 2020, we were supposed to go back three times that year. And the first time was in the spring for when my mother turned 80. I actually did not see my mother the entire year that she was 80. I did see her when she turned 81. But I didn't know that, didn't know that was going to happen because we didn't know. I was supposed to go back in December, which didn't happen. And then I was supposed to go back in the fall, this time of year, for Rosh Hashanah. And I was really in a big funk, more so than usual in the beginning of September 2020, because I was really missing my family. And so my neighbor said to me, I know you're supposed to go back for Rosh Hashanah. I can't do anything about that, but other than services and, you know, and your family, what are you missing? And I said, I miss the songs, and I miss the shofar. The shofar is a ram's horn that you blow. And so she invited some of our other non-Jewish neighbors to her house for a bonfire. And we did an outside Rosh Hashanah ceremony that she handled the whole thing. She is a God-fearing Christian woman who goes to church every week, and she did this for me. And she did this for me and for our little community. So, she read the kids a book that she found at the library, and we had cut apples that we drizzled in honey, and we listened to a song, a Rosh Hashanah song on the phone. And then somehow her daughter had a shofar from church. So, I actually did get to hear that shofar. And it wasn't a particularly religious ceremony, and I've never had something like that before. But I'll never forget the feeling of welcome and of community and of acceptance that I felt and how my heart felt. And the celebration was over in just a few minutes, but that feeling of community and goodwill is still with me today, two years later. So, I want to thank Councilwoman Erin for asking what we as a council can do to respect the holiday and to further thank her for hearing me when I said at the last meeting that I attended that based on the legality of our charter, the five non-Jewish council members should be attending so that Councilwoman Fleming and I could be absent without any concern. So, along with Councilwoman Erin, I also want to thank Mayor Pro Temblis, Councilor Orbach, and Councilwoman Soltes for making sure that they were here on Rosh Hashanah so that council would not be breaching our charter. And with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to move into closed session for pending litigation. I need to say pending litigation? It is regarding Jeffrey Brozich, deceased versus the city of Madison Heights. This is exempt from disclosure as provided for under Section 8 of the Open Meetings Act. We get a motion, please? Yes?
I move that we move it to closed session to review that.
Specific pending.
The specific pending litigation is exempt from disclosure.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Supporting, Your Honor.
All right. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, can we just have a five-minute recess before that?
No, we're going to go into closed session. We're going to take the vote, and then we can take a five-minute recess. All right. Is there any discussion? Clerk, can you please do a roll call to the closed session? Councilwoman Erin?
Yeah.
Roll call, yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fleming?
Yes.
Councilor Orbach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Soltes?
Yes.
Councilor Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein?
I vote yes. Thank you. All right. The time is 8:28. This concludes the regular council meeting. We are going into a five-minute break, and then we will be having our closed session.